Thank you, and welcome to the Wednesday. Welcome to the Wednesday, March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the Redmond Planning Commission. Call this meeting to order.
So moved.
Hmm? Oh, sorry. That was too soon. Sorry.
We'll start with a, with a roll call. Commissioner Woodier.
Present.
Commissioner Parna.
Present.
Commissioner Sheffron.
Present.
Vice Chair Weston.
Present.
And I am Chair Sherri Nichols. Commissioner Van Neumann is excused this evening. Look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the agenda is approved. We also have the February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting minutes and the February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting summary to approve. Looking for a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those are approved. This is the point in the meeting where we provide opportunity for public comment on any item that is not the subject of a public hearing. We have two people signed up. First is David M.
Okay.
I'm David Morton, one nine nine three four, Northeast Union Hill Road, Redmond, nine eight oh five three. In honor of National Groundwater Awareness Week, I'd like to talk about Redmond's drinking water aquifer. Protecting shallow, unconfined drinking water aquifers in cities is crucial to ensure a safe and reliable source of drinking water. Here are several measures that cities can take to avoid contaminating their own shallow drinking water aquifers. First, land use planning. Zone the areas around the aquifer for low-risk land uses such as parks. Within the critical aquifer recharge areas, or CARAs, restrict high-risk industrial operations, such as chemical manufacturing and processing, and prohibit the storage of hazardous waste and underground gasoline and diesel storage tanks. Second, wellhead protection programs. Frequently monitor and regulate land use within these wellhead protection zones, considering factors like potential contaminant sources and transport mechanisms. Redmond is planning to significantly increase the number and density of residents, industry, and manufacturing within its CARAs. Redmond should review and adjust the frequency of sampling and testing its drinking water aquifer supply and monitoring wells. Third, storm water management. Implement effective storm water management practices to prevent contaminants from entering the aquifer. This may include green infrastructure, permeable surfaces, and retention basins, vegetation along swales, buffer zones, waterways, and drainage channels, filter and absorb pollutants from storm water and reduce the transport of contaminants into an aquifer. Fourth, hazardous waste disposal regulations. Enforce strict regulations for the disposal of hazardous waste and other potential contaminants. Implement proper treatment processes for wastewater before discharge. Fifth, spill response plans. Develop and implement spill response plans to address accidental releases of hazardous substances. This includes training personnel and having the necessary equipment in place to respond promptly to spills. Sixth, monitoring and testing. Frequently monitor water quality in the aquifer to detect any potential contamination early on and to ensure the safety of the drinking water supply. Building more high-risk industrial and manufacturing operations on Redmond's CARAs may require more frequent monitoring of its drinking water aquifer, potentially on a monthly or even more regular basis. Regular review and adjustment of monitoring programs based on changing conditions and new information are essential to ensuring the ongoing safety of Redmond's drinking water supply. Seventh, community education. Educate the community about the importance of protecting the aquifer and the potential sources of contamination, and encourage the responsible use of fertilizers, pesticides, herbicides, and other chemicals that could leach into the groundwater. Eighth, regulatory compliance. Ensure that industries and businesses operating within the city comply with environmental regulations related to groundwater protection, and ensure that industries and businesses have honestly completed their applications for a business license to operate in Redmond. Unscrupulous business license applicants might choose to misrepresent the nature of their operations by falsifying information on the hazardous materials questionnaire, and enforce penalties for noncompliance to deter potential polluters. Ninth, alternative water sources. Explore alternative water sources to reduce the reliance on shallow aquifers, especially in densely populated areas. Consider diversifying water sources using deeper aquifers, surface water, or treated wastewater. Finally, emergency response plans. Develop and regularly update emergency response plans to address contamination incidents promptly. Train emergency responders and local authorities on the proper procedures to mitigate and respond to groundwater contamination events. By implementing a combination of these measures, cities can work towards safeguarding their shallow, unconfined drinking water aquifers and ensuring a sustainable and clean water supply for their residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Devon K.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners and staff. My name is Devon Kellogg. I'm a parent, a preschool teacher, and a stable climate advocate, living on Education Hill near Hartman Park. I'd like to provide comments on the utilities element this evening, particularly UT seventy-one and eighty-five. First, I'd like to commend the city and the staff for considering health, safety, and climate impacts in city policies. I'd like to read you an excerpt from the Redmond's Climate Element, version two. Buildings and energy represent the largest source of greenhouse gas emissions in Redmond, accounting for about sixty-five percent of total two hundred and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-two emissions. The largest sources within this sector are for commercial electricity and residential natural gas consumption, largely used for heating, cooling, and powering appliances and equipment. It goes on to describe the opportunities we have to dramatically reduce Redmond's community greenhouse gas emissions with renewable and efficiency measures. Renewable options and, yeah, efficient options, while simultaneously increasing cost savings, local jobs, and economic development, and reducing air pollution. If you've been following the climate discussion like I have, you know that methane, the primary component in natural gas, is considered critical to reduce this decade, to stay below critical heat-trapping gas limits globally. This is because of both the extreme warming potency of this gas, eighty percent more impactful than carbon dioxide alone, plus its propensity to leak during fracking, transmission, and end-use. Studies show that this deadly combo is often worse for our climate than coal. Even when burned according to plan, natural gas is still a toxic pollutant and carbon emitter. Gas leaks are not only destroying our climate, they're also costly explosive and deadly toxic. Building and maintenance, maintaining expensive gas infrastructure is costing all of us beyond the costly climate impacts affecting us in indirect, indirect ways. Hookups themselves are often subsidized by several, just tens of thousands of dollars in some cases. Pipeline maintenance is costly, and, excuse me, utility bills are expected to rise as more people transition to, more people decarbonize. That will be for the remaining ratepayers. There are, there are health and safety aspects, too. Indoor gas use has been found not only to contribute to forty-five percent of childhood asthma cases, but an Evergreen College student just died last night from a poorly-fitted tankless water heater in student housing. Home fires and gas line explosions are becoming increasingly commonplace. I don't even want to think about what will happen with these pipelines in our city when the big earthquake hits. For these reasons and more, I ask you to consider beefing up UT seventy-one to include phasing out natural gas use as both a home heating as well as an energy source, and to provide clear phase-out targets in line with what climate experts say is the necessary expediency. Please make sure the policy language does not enable or subsidize the build-out of new gas infrastructure. And lastly, please include air quality, fire, and earthquake safety considerations in UT eighty-five. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. I also want to recognize staff who have extended their workday to be with us here tonight to support us. Joining us tonight are Chris Wyatt, Jeff Churchill, Odra Cardenas, Tom Hardy, Tim McGarg, Lauren Anderson, Dave Lee, Jessica Atlickson, Glenn Coyle, Chris Stinger, and Ian Lefkort. Okay, now we'll move on to Redmond two thousand and fifty final draft, Natural Environment Element and Critical Areas Regulations Update study session. Glenn.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. Sorry I can't be in person. I caught a cold, and you don't want to hear me coughing and hacking the whole time because I can't put mute on when I'm joining you guys in person. So yes, we're going to be talking about the natural environment element and the critical areas regulations. I just note that I'm being joined by colleague Lauren Anderson, who's going to talk about the critical areas regulations. And then also, we have some other staff here, kind of technical subject matter experts. Some are online. I believe David Lee's here in person, but we also have Jessica Atlickson, Tim Mahag, and Tom Hardy to, if you have any questions on that. So with that said, let me bring up the presentation here. Make sure of the right screen. All right, can everybody see that? Looks like it's working. Okay. So, let's get my mouse set. So just provide some background on kind of what the updates, what we're trying to do. Lauren also talked about some of the public outreach around the critical areas regulations, what some of those changes are, and our schedule going forward. This is just a quick reminder of our requirements for a natural environment element. It's actually not required under the Growth Management Act. Really, that's the land use element that talks about the critical areas of protections. That being said, we kind of re-delegate to the natural environment element to have all our critical areas-type policies, and we do that to align with our regional county policies. We also use the natural environment element as kind of a home for environmental stewardship, green infrastructure, critical areas, as we mentioned, but also some of these quality life type policies, too, around tree preservation, air quality, noise, and lake pollution. And this element is intended to align with our shoreline master program, which is another element of the comp plan, which is not currently being updated. So with that, I will turn it over to Lauren to speak to the critical area regulations update.
Thank you. So critical areas include fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas, wetlands, frequently flooded areas, the critical aquifer recharge areas, also known as CARA, and geologically hazardous areas. Next slide, please. So here's the history of the past critical area ordinances dating back to nineteen ninety-two to the most recently in two thousand and sixteen. So these changes include stream mapping updates, best available science updates, and other amendments. We are currently proposing to you all tonight the following updates. The zoning code amendment, which includes critical area, critical area regulations update and the map updates, as well as the comp plan amendment, which includes the natural environment element, as well as limited shoreline master program amendment, which is updating the shorelines of state typing and buffers for consistency. So amending the zoning code and comp plan is a type-six legislative process. The tech committee makes a recommendation to the planning commission. The planning commission then conducts an open public hearing and study sessions. Then the planning commission makes recommendation to the city council. The city council is the decision-making body. The planning commission and city council have such a matter, subject matter jurisdiction. We are updating the critical areas code due to the following. So compliance with the Growth Management Act, consistency with state agency guidance documents, having the code supported by best available science, provide code clarity, reflect new information, as well as policy update and coordination with Redmond two thousand and fifty. We have public engagement in two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four via email, as well as meetings. We had a virtual office hour. We had an in-person office hour, as well as meetings with ecology and fish and wildlife. We also have our webpage for critical areas update, also over social media. That includes Nextdoor, Facebook, Instagram, as multiple updates, and then also internal discussions. So we had internal discussions with engineering and also our technical committee. So here are some of the key changes. These include stream typing, increasing the minimum buffers for landslide hazard areas, implementing building setbacks from critical area buffers, the map portfolio update, and also streamlining and consolidating policies. Since the last meeting in January, we also had the following changes. So we added clarification on pre-existing and non-conforming uses in critical areas and critical area buffers, updated to address hazardous trees and NGPEs, native growth protection easements, and then also added definition for reconstruction. So here is a table that shows the existing classification and the proposed typing, as well as the existing proposed buffers. So a class one is going to be changed to a type S with a two-hundred-foot buffer. Class two changes to a type FS with a hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer. Class three changes to a type FF with a one-hundred-foot buffer. And then class four streams will change to a type N and a type O with buffers that are either fifty or twenty-five feet. So building setbacks from critical area buffers are also required in other jurisdictions nearby. This includes Kirkland at ten feet, Bellevue ranges from ten to twenty, Isiqua and some Mamish, it's fifteen feet, and Windville, it's ten feet. Currently, Redmond, we have zero buffer setbacks, but we're proposing fifteen feet. So here are the following map updates that we are proposing. So for the streams, revising to show the new stream classification and types, as well as the location changes. For wetlands, updating the maps to include site-specific wetland delineations. And then for frequently flooded areas, revising to illustrate most recently adopted FEMA floodway and floodplain information. And then the CARA, revising to eliminate parks and open space layer as those are, as an exception areas to the CARA regulations. And then also time of travel. So the new CARA time of travel maps to ensure compliance with wellhead protection and time of travel provisions, which are in WAC two four six, two ninety, one three five. So here are some examples of the updated maps. So on the left, we have the frequently flooded areas, and then on the right, we have the stream classification. And I'll hand it back to Glenn.
Hey, back to me. So I have a couple of slides here on the natural environment element. This first slide really talks about the overall changes from the Redmond two thousand and thirty current, current comprehensive plan to what the updates will be as part of the Redmond two thousand and fifty. So this is kind of just a summary of the different iterations and drafts you've seen, going back the whole Redmond two thousand and fifty process over the last, what, three, four years. So ultimately, the, some of the existing framework policies have been consolidated into three policies and kind of moved them under different sections. The biggest changes were to section B, the environmentally critical areas, and that's really the work Lauren and Kathy and the team did around the regulation. So there was a lot of policy updates there for consistency, and then also just reducing a lot of redundancy there. We updated section C, had a little bit different number before. That's just the tree canopy policies, and we just updated those to better align with the strategic plan. And then the other big change was the, the section on climate change was moved and revised in the new climate resilience and sustainability element. Let's see. And for a planning commission, from the second draft that we saw a few months ago, these kind of summarized the changes there. Really, a lot of it's some text changes. The vision statement has been updated based on some council feedback. We updated the, the policy numbers. As you note, there was a lot of policies moved around and eliminated, so we had to really fix that to ensure consistency. Just, you know, fixing acronyms, things like that, and I mentioned the, the framework policies. Also, based on some planning commission feedback, we added the clause, or Northwest Adaptive, when we talk about some of the vegetation uses there. So. And this is just kind of the schedule going forward. This is probably similar to a lot of the, some of the elements that are going through planning commission here. Today's thirteenth, we have a study session. We also have time for an additional study session on March twenty-seventh, if so needed. And April tenth, we are looking for a public hearing, that, and potential study session. We also have, if needed, additional study session and recommendation with the report approval in May, and then we'll go on to council. And again, the planning commission recommendation we're looking for is just supporting these amendments to the comprehensive plan and the zoning code and that limited shoreline program amendment. So with that, any questions or comments? We have some staff, as I noted, on hand, if you have any particular questions. If not, we could also move on to the issues matrix that we have for some of the previous questions and comments brought up.
Do you have any questions for Commissioner Weston?
So, thank you for the new maps, by the way. I had one question about the stream classification specifically. I was wondering, are there any creeks or streams of any classification that aren't, where you have water running through Redmond, but it's not actually on that stream map? Because there's some places where there are gaps, and I wasn't clear if that's just because things are moved to underground or drained to a larger body somehow? Or if that's where the water actually seeps in?
I can, I can address that question if you'd like. Glenn, could you, could you go to the stream map?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Tom Hardy. I'm in, I'm an environmental scientist in Public Works. So what I think you may be referring to is there are gaps in the, in the streamline, the blue lines, and that, those more than likely represent the stream going underneath the road. So when the stream goes underneath the road, it's not represented on the surface, and it doesn't get buffers off of that underground portion of the stream. But I don't know if that answered your question, but, but the, the map in general is, is just for guidance, and so there's no guarantees that every single stream, regulated stream is on this map. It's, it's just for trying to document all the information that we do know about.
Okay, that makes a lot of sense. And then one follow-up question on that. I might have missed it, but are there dumping provisions somewhere that control, like if someone actually was dumping something that they shouldn't be into a stream or a creek, does Redmond have any provisions for that, or is that at the state level?
Certainly at the state level. Explicitly dumping, I'd have to look into the, the code to see if, if we have those exact words, but I don't know. Lauren, do you know if, if we have that?
I can add, under the utilities element related to storm water, there are a couple of policies related to kind of spill response and kind of requirement for like a spill response plan. Again, I can't speak the more like what's in the code or et cetera, but there, there is some policies at that, at that, at that level in the comp plan.
Yeah. And general degradation and, and impacts to the physical stream or the buffer are, are covered in, in the zoning code.
Okay.
I think Jeff might have an additional response on that. I see his hand up.
Thanks, Glenn. I'm, I'm just here searching the code. So there, so there are provisions in the municipal code that prohibit dumping into streams, and for example, all right, I had, it was Title Nine, RMC Title Nine, nine dot thirty-one dot three seventy prohibits polluting the, a waterway in any way.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
I think Commissioner Parna had her hand up.
Thanks, Sherri. Thanks, Glenn. I actually had a question, which might be quite, maybe quite silly, but I'm just wondering why we moved, maybe this is a question for Lauren, why we moved from the type one type of classification to the FF, and is it to comply with state code, or is there some new science that we should be aware of?
It's combined with state regulations.
Ah, thank you.
Yeah, in the...
Sorry.
In the memo, there's a table that goes through what's required and quotes the, the WAC and the RCW.
Commissioner Sheffron.
Thank you. So I just want to address something that David Morton had brought up, and I appreciate it, with respect to businesses that are adjacent near the CARAs. And I guess the question that I'm curious about is, when a business applies for its license and they disclose presumably the materials that are used in the business, is there any sort of monitoring that happens at the city level to ensure that there's compliance?
I'll go ahead and take that one, if that's all right. I'm Jessica Atlickson. I'm an environmental scientist with Public Works. So yeah, when the business applies for a business license, a pollution prevention specialist in my group will be notified of that, and they will work with the business to ensure that they are properly containing that material. If they're within the CARA, most, they have to do secondary containment of that material. So there's special restrictions if they're specifically within the CARA.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Commissioner Woodier.
Does that also extend to guidance for developers and how they can develop their land? Because I know that in these documents, there's, there's talk, there's reference to, you know, they may not be able to develop the entire, the entirety of their lot due to some of these, these policies. How easy are we making it for developers, or even homeowners, to, to understand at time of purchase or at time of planning whether they can develop the, the entirety of their, of their, of their property? Is that through... entirety of their, of their property? Is that through this body that you just referenced to Denny's question, or is there some other place where they can get that ease of guidance?
So a couple of things there. This is Tim McCard, Principal Planner. So in the critical area regulations, there's actually a requirement for notice to title. So if you have a critical area that's gone through the city review process, and there's been development on that parcel, it's required for the owner of the property, you know, prior to developing the property, to put a notice on the title of the property disclosing that there are regulated critical areas on the parcel. And so that's, that's really the best way when, for example, properties change hands, as part of all your closing materials and in your title report, that disclosure would show up. But also, we have critical area maps that are available to the public on the city's websites, and we're also available to answer any questions that people have as a regular course of what we do in Development Review Group, to answer questions about critical areas.
Commissioner Kaparna.
I'm just curious. I know a lot of people look through information for their parcels through the King County Property Tax Portal. So, and I know there's a property report there as well, which does delineate what is buildable, what is critical area, and so on. Would it be possible to have a link to what's, what the information is in Redmond into that place so that it's sort of linked up and we have more details? I don't know. It's just a thought.
Yeah, so we're not really able to dictate to King County what they put on their websites, either their GIS systems or the assessors database. But what we do, we are able to do is we have a parcel viewer that's part of the city's website. And what we do is we provide a clickable link within that for people to click on the parcel number, and that will open up the King County assessors information. And so that would be, you know, just one click away for folks.
Okay, thank you. I did not know that, but thank you.
Yep.
Okay, I think that's everybody's questions. If we want to move on to the issues matrix.
Think that's up on the screen? Okay, I can zoom in a little bit. All right. Okay, the first one was from Chair Nichols. This is actually from, I think, from the first draft. There was some questions about the noise walls. You can see the response that we provided for that.
Yeah, it's far more detail about noise walls than I really cared to know. Yeah, my question was more about, is this a policy we still really want to pursue? But it sounds like, yes, we are still.
Yeah, we, we got some council direction that they wanted all the noise and kind of those type policies maintained. So these policies have probably been edited the least of a lot of the policies there.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah. I was just questioning the effectiveness of it and whether or not it was something we really needed to do, but, okay, we can close this one.
All right. The second item, that was from Commissioner Kaparna regarding the climate resilience element. Again, this was from last June. So I think really the response was, well, the response is, we are doing a climate element. So, and that wasn't necessarily the case back last June, because I think we, our first draft came out in July, August, so.
I think I did send an email, we can close this one, but I think it would be nice to have this explanation which kind of puts all the pieces together. Some kind of map which ties all these documents together would be nice. So cross-referencing it with the ESAP or, you know, the climate element would be, in the narrative, would be really nice, right? As exactly how they plug in. So I also sent the email to close number three or parts, and number four, in the interest of time, four A, C, and D. I think the CARA section here reads very well. But I do have a question about four B, which is that where appropriate thing in NE39, or is it, yeah, is it a number change? Yeah, it's 29 now, right? The next policy, number 30, actually uses the same word, remove, does not use these words. So I was just wondering why this, because for me, where appropriate means it's, there is a sense of judgment and there's a little bit of an open door there.
Yeah, pull that up on the screen.
Yeah.
I want to see, maybe Lauren could possibly, or Jessica could kind of maybe get into the why of kind of where, why we use those certain terminology.
Sure, yeah, thank you. So with NE30, we'll start there. That is specifically referencing the critical aquifer recharge area, and so that's why we, you know, prohibiting certain things there. In NE29, that more, let's see, I'm sorry, I'm trying to read it on the screen here. That's referencing, I think, thanks, Glenn, I'm sorry, my vision is terrible. Let's see.
It's under the CARA section.
Yeah, it's under the CARA section. I'm sorry. So I, I think it got renumbered. So the, oh, wait, here we go, where appropriate. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. This was reference, where we're using where appropriate. There are some areas where infiltration is just not feasible. And so I think that's what that's referencing there. It's just kind of saying that infiltration is not always possible.
Yeah, but then it just prohibits, I feel that the words leave the door open. If infiltration is not possible, then there's no need, it won't even be referencing this policy, right? I mean, it's moot. So, because the way I look at it is, I like, the CARA, we should have it really clear, there should be no doubts about its uses or anything, right? So I'm just kind of, I, I'm sorry, it's a quibble, I know, but I feel it leaves the door open, so.
No, I, I see, I see what you're saying here. And yeah, I would be fine with removing where appropriate. I don't know if anybody else on the team would have objections to that, but that's, that seems reasonable.
Right, thank you. And Glenn, I think all the other comments from my side, everything can be closed. I think most of them are from me. So for the natural environment issue matrix, please close all of them. It's wonderful explanation. So, thank you.
All right. All right, the next section of comments are related to the critical areas regulations. So, yeah, the first one is regarding the valuation. Can you see in the issues matrix, there's a table at the end that kind of talks about some of those different types of regulations and that crosswalk there?
Yes, I think the crosswalk would be very useful as an appendix to the main document. It's excellent. It just really gives a sense of where we are at. Personally, I would love to see it somewhere in the document as an appendix or somewhere, but you can close this one, Glenn. Thank you.
Okay, second one, also Commissioner Kaparna.
Right. Again, I said we could close this one, but I think it would be nice to see that in the wellhead thing, if we could see the frequency and type of test in the wellhead protection regulations, we are able to see that. As long as we know that it's being addressed there, then I think we can close it, right? I understand it is going to be there, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Question three, if I recall, was actually kind of, was answered at the previous planning commission meeting, but we added this to the matrix. That said, Commissioner Nuva Karina is no longer on commission, and I know Tara's not here. So do you want to just save this for next time, just to ensure Van Eyckman wants to close this?
Yeah, since we will be bringing this back, I think we can leave it open.
Okay. Number four, I think was just a question on best available science. I think this was one also Kathy had kind of had answered at the last commission meeting, but we just wanted to provide like a formal answer on that. I believe that was co-chair Weston that had mentioned that.
Sorry, I'm reading. This almost answered my question. So my, my specific question was there are some things where we're getting news reports. An example of this would be to do with the drought and the reservoir, where it's, it seems like the current climate might be outstripping the best available science. And so if there are cases where like there's a judgment call, where it seems like the best available science refers to something that is not present conditions on the ground, if that has an impact. And it's, it's sort of a difficult question to answer because I don't, like, I completely understand this answer in terms of the best available science being a reasonable thing to follow and what we're legally obligated to follow. But it just, there, there are legitimate concerns about what is happening in our area with climate change and with growth, and the science might not be keeping up. And I was just curious how Redmond's approaching that. It, it seems like the sort of thing that we should be planning ahead, like with a little bit extra conservatism, or like a little bit extra concern that the science that we're planning off of right now might not, the models might not match, or the ground conditions might change rapidly.
Lauren or Jessica, anybody want to speak to a little bit of that, or kind of the best available science standard?
Um, I can speak slightly to it. I mean, Kathy would really be the best person to answer this question, I think. I think she's most familiar. Lauren, have you, are you familiar with the best available science? Or Tim, I saw you come on too.
Yeah, so my perspective on best available science is it's, you're right, it's, it's not bleeding-edge science. It's intended to be, you know, a fairly circumscribed basis for regulations, particularly in the areas of wetlands and, and water bodies, streams, so forth. Also, to a limited effect, also geologic hazard areas, critical, critical aquifer recharge areas. I don't think that there are necessarily as well-defined best available science through the WAC for that particular type of critical area. So I would defer, I think, sorry, Jessica, back to, I mean, we all know that climate change is, is here. It's past coming. So in terms of what you foresee, Jessica, in terms of managing the resource, that's Vice Chair Weston, I'm not sure if, if that's the perspective that you're using. What are we doing to kind of anticipate these scenarios where we have very, very poor rainfall seasons, and the aquifer isn't recharging at the same rate as it has been historically? And I think that's really outside of kind of the best available science that's in the, in the WAC, because that, that's more of a aquifer management perspective as opposed to a critical area regulation that is trying to prevent certain types of uses, certain types of materials from entering into the aquifer. Am I understanding your question correctly, or am I?
No, I think, I think you're exactly there. Another example of this that came up the previous time we talked about it was just like the areas in Eastern Washington and some of surrounding communities around us where like PFAS have entered the water supply, firefighting foam or that sort of thing, and where the original assumption was that that was a relatively safe material and well-contained, and now we know it isn't. So I think, I think there's still applications here to the CARA.
Yeah, so one, yeah, absolutely. So, you know, I know that, I mean, Jessica and I have talked about PFAS issues. We've also talked about, you know, relatively recently, the city adopted some regulations relative to a similar, well, not a similar issue, but a related issue, which is impacts on the aquifer from things like temporary construction de-watering. And so that is something that Jessica and her group have been keenly involved with. And one of the kind of metrics that would be used for determining whether there are going to be impacts based upon temporary construction de-watering is the seasonality of construction and the resulting, you know, movement of the level of the aquifer, and the condition of the aquifer based upon, you know, the, the previous rainy season and when, where the levels are. And so that's an example, I think, of one of the tools that the city is using to try to protect the aquifer as best we can, given the kind of changing conditions, which are just going to be more volatile as we move forward.
Okay, so that is very helpful. I think I would appreciate a little bit more guidance in terms of, like, a feeling whether or not best available science covers that? Because to me, it sounds like there's some real initiative happening within the Redmond City government to like, to be very thoughtful about scenarios like de-watering.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm not sure if that's covered by the same.
It's, it's not. So, you know, best available science is things like, for example, and maybe, maybe Tom wants to speak to some of this, but it's, it's the way that we use science to inform the critical area regulations. So for example, you know, how you, how you go out as a wetland biologist and, you know, do your analysis of a wetland and what you look for and how you type things. So that's really the best available science application that I'm most familiar with. I think kind of management of a drinking water supply, even if that's, you know, say, for example, a surface water supply hypothetically, or an underground water supply such as CARA, you know, there's, there's separate programs distinct from critical area regulations and best available science, where cities need to safeguard the quality and quantity of that drinking water supply. So I think there's, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Sorry, that's a great answer. Do you think that Redmond is doing that in a way that's encapsulated in a document like this?
Um, I know that, yeah, go ahead, that's great.
Yeah, specifically talking about the CARA, we have the Redmond Municipal Code 1307, which really dictates what our program does. So that includes what we were talking about a little bit earlier with the pollution prevention, assistance that go out and help businesses that have hazardous materials. It covers our groundwater monitoring program. So there's kind of two different aspects. We have approximately 100 monitoring wells throughout the CARA that serves really as an early warning system for our drinking water supply wells. So we monitor those twice a year. And then on the other side of the house, so I'm, you know, an environmental scientist, but there's also the operations and maintenance, and they have testing that they do at the drinking water supply wells. That's really regulated by the Department of Health. And so it's really the municipal code that kind of guides our program in the protection of the CARA.
Okay, that's wonderful. Thank you so much.
Yeah, and I would add that, you know, one, one perhaps recent example of kind of this line of thinking, which at least from my perspective is relatively recent and is coming from all the way from the council level down, is, you know, we allowed previously in downtown, we would actually encouraged in a lot of our policies below-grade parking, you know, two levels of below-grade parking is what people could achieve. And because of the, the level of the aquifer, the depth to groundwater, oftentimes there was a tremendous amount of temporary construction de-watering happening as a result of that. There were also issues post-construction with the hydrostatic There were also issues post-construction with the hydrostatic pressures, um, you know, basically doing damage to the buildings. And so I think seeing that happening has resulted in this change of perspective. And that's exactly what you saw, for example, in the recent, um, town center zone amendments uh, that went through planning commission and were adopted by council last year. You know, what we, what those allow is additional height, um, of buildings up to 12 stories, uh, provided certain incentives are met. And, and that is to encourage people from not doing below grade parking within the Cara one area. And so, you know, these pieces are kind of, you know, now that we have that perspective and, uh, are focused on, on protection of Cara. Not that we weren't previously, but I just think seeing these things happen um, is important. And, you know, to take those lessons learned and now apply that to, you know, how, how we're allowing things in downtown, you know, allowing taller buildings to do that parking above grade. Um, and really only allowing excavations that are shallower for things like, uh, building foundations, footings and elevator pits. So it, it's definitely an emerging issue.
Commissioner Wood.
This is a related question. So, so given all that you've just said, uh, and, and all the monitoring that takes place. What do, what does the city do in instances or assuming there, maybe there have not been instances, but what would the city do in instances where you've approved a project, it's a major project, uh, it's compliant, but all of a sudden mid-project or somewhere along the lines. We, we, there, there's realization through all your monitoring that substantial de-watering is, 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 is taking place and, and risk to the Cara. Do we have any teeth to remedy that midstream?
So I would, no, I, I would say that, you know, any, any project that's been submitted, you know, in, in my time here with the city, which is relatively brief. About 18 months, that's not going to happen because of these changes in the regulations. And so, you know, myself and all the other planners for projects within Cara one worked very, very closely with, with Jessica and her group to ensure that that doesn't happen. So there's a lot of technical analysis, um, that, that comes in from qualified consultants of developers. Jessica and her team review that information, um, you know, and there is, uh, there is sufficient regulatory leverage teeth. Um, to say, no, you, you, you can't, we're not going to support you going to that depth. You need to figure out another way to do that. And in fact, that, that is what came to pass with, um, a project that's happening in, in Redmond Town Center right now. They originally came in proposing two levels of below grade parking or a story and a half. Um, the impacts were, were unmitigated and we said so, and now they're, they're not doing any below grade parking. So, you know, I think our regulations are, are working to that effect.
So then we feel that the regulations coupled with the language in NE thirty one is sufficient to make sure that we continue to not have these, have, have these issues, uh, putting us at risk.
Uh, I'll kick that over to Jessica. She's the scientist. I'm just, uh, I'm just a planner.
Um, and yeah, we're actually, uh, in the process of working through, um, Redmond twenty fifty to put even greater restrictions on de-watering. And so once those go through, which is scheduled for first quarter of twenty twenty five, then yes, I mean, then we're going to be completely mitigating the impacts of de-watering, um, within the Cara.
Great.
I'd like that documented somewhere so that come twenty twenty five, we can make sure. It is important. Yeah.
Yeah. I remember when the current one, de-watering restrictions came in, it wasn't that long ago. So.
Correct. We did interim restrictions. That's correct. Um, just because, you know, we, we recognized that working, it was important to work through the twenty fifty process and, but that timeline was so long that that's why we did interim to just make sure we weren't getting the really big projects that we had seen earlier.
Yeah. I love that forward thinking. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
It's, it's not going to be forgotten. Okay. So, uh, are we good?
Yep, we can close. Thank you.
Okay.
Hey, thank you. All right. Uh, issue five, which is a question on the link to the existing critical areas maps, uh, that, that's provided in there. Uh, but as, as been noted, uh, a few times, uh, they're being updated. So that's in your packet and the technical committee report at the end, updated map portfolio, and it's on the critical areas update, uh, page there.
Yes. Thank you so much for both the old maps and the new maps. They're great. So that can close.
Okay. All right. Um, six again was, was the question. Oh.
Okay.
Right. Um. Six was a question from Vice Chair Weston about kind of wildlife. Um, this provides a little bit more detailed answer, uh, than we were, uh, than we provided, uh, back in January.
Yeah, this was mostly just informational to me. Um, I, and the beavers being a potent example of something that, um, can both be like an asset and a menace. So I just, I was curious what the actual city policy was, and it's good to know that we're in alignment with the state. And I assume that if there was something that came up where we wanted to move, you have a more specific policy that doesn't violate the state policy, but just expands on it, then that would be an option somehow? Or is this the time when that would happen and we'd have to wait till the next revision?
Um, Lauren, can you speak to that or?
So can you repeat the question again?
Oh, sorry.
So you're asking if we can, if we can update it now or if we have to wait?
Yeah, I'm just, if there was ever a species that Redmond decided they were very attached to beyond what's in the state policy. Um, I know, I'm thinking specifically, like, I know salmon are pretty well covered in this area, but I don't know if, like, if there's some other creature. It might, never mind. Commissioner Wood, you're sending me glares.
So now would be the time to add it. Um, but if there are any species in the future, then that would require an amendment.
Yeah, you can identify species of local importance as part of the process. Um, so it doesn't need to happen now unless you have a favorite species.
Oh, no, I'm fine.
So yeah, that's a good icebreaker at, uh, next planning commission cocktail party. So what's your favorite species for?
There's your icebreaker for the retreat.
All right. Thank you for entertaining that line of questioning. Um, and I'm ready to close.
Okay. Next question was from, um, Commissioner Nueva Camina. It was regarding just, um, kind of native plant references. Um, and as we noted here, uh, in some of the policies, we added the phrase, uh, Northwest Adaptive. When we talk about some of the native type vegetation, uh, that we, uh, call out in those policies. So. So maybe.
I will close that for Commissioner, now council member, Nueva Camina.
Yeah.
Do you have something?
Thank you.
I just had, just, just quickly, I, I love.
Is your mic on?
Yeah, it's on. You can hear me. I, I love all the changes that are being made to this policy. This is fantastic. And I guess my final thought is, do we feel, is there anything missing that would cause another degradation of, of Evans Creek or other, other waterways? You know, this looks really good, but what are we missing? And I, and I asked that question because I don't have the history on what caused the degradation, degradation of Evans Creek in the first place. Are, are we really kicking the tires hard enough so that we're not? Because we, we, with all the development that's happening here, there's a lot of risk and I love that we're being really aggressive, but what are we missing?
Tom, are you able to speak about Evans Creek?
Um, is there, is there a specific, um, issue with Evans Creek? Are you referring to the, the Evans Creek relocation project or?
I'm just challenging us all to take a step back and more broadly think, are we, are we being, is there enough teeth in the language of these documents to ensure that with all the development happening, with all the risks happening, with all the critical areas, that we're not missing anything? And I know we have some, a little bit of time to make sure of that, but, you know, I'm, I'm, you know, it, it's kind of a, a question to ponder. And ponder I will.
Yeah. I, I mean, I, I appreciate the, the question. Evan, the Evans Creek watershed in general has gone through a lot of changes over the past hundred years. Um, and to kind of undo all those changes is, um, is difficult and will take a long time. I would say, um, you know, the buffers that we have in, in place, um, will be doing a good job of protecting Evans Creek in the future, um, as new development happens. Um, but I honestly think the, one of the most important things to protect Evans Creek and other streams is, um, is dream redevelopment, um, the retrofit of stormwater facilities. So all, you know, not only moving Evans Creek out of the industrial zone, um, will help tremendously. Um, but basically cleaning and, and retaining the stormwater in stormwater ponds and bio retention facilities and that sort of thing before it goes into Evans Creek will do a, um, would do a lot of good, uh, in terms of improving Evans Creek, uh, health. So to answer your question, I, I think there are, there's plenty of protections in, in everything that's in the zoning code, uh, going forward.
All right. Now, next issue was, uh, regarding the Cara maps and regulations from Commissioner Poner.
Um, yeah. So I think, um, we can close the, uh, the ones which are expanding the zoning regulations with a caveat that we kind of keep it open for as an open item for, you know, the PC report saying we're going to work on this, right? Um, so since it's being studied, we, we want to make sure that it carries over to whatever it needs to carry over. So that's the one thing. And the pure pervious surfaces is also great. I just had a question about the first section there, which was basically when the last modeling was done, because I understand that we are referencing the modeling and saying that, hey, this is the best to use previous language, the best available science right now. That's the last studied report. So if it's twenty eighteen, which I thought it could have been, um, then do we know that it is, um, how do I put this? Um, do we know that the models would seem similar given the uneven rains and the dryer seasons in the last two or three years? Like, when could we expect the next modeling so that we know that this is in the right track?
That's a great question. So yes, twenty eighteen was the last time that model was updated. And as I mentioned, you know, we do, um, semi-annual groundwater monitoring events. So we have a lot more data, uh, since that was done. Um, and so we're actually planning on asking for a budget request, uh, to do a model update sometime within twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six.
Okay. So would that mean that when we have these zoning restrictions in place because of a certain model and a certain understanding, if that changes, would there be a place for us to kind of say, hey, we will revisit these zoning restrictions should our new study show something which is a little more alarming, say, right?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. Um, and that's exactly what we did in twenty eighteen when we updated the model is that we updated our Cara maps, uh, because those boundaries had changed a little bit. And so that would be the same plan once we have, um, if there were any changes uh, based on, you know, precipitation changes and that type of thing. I will say that, that we are lucky with our groundwater that it is, uh, precipitation mainly rain based and it's not dependent on snowpack because that's what's really being impacted here. So, um, but yeah, that. Sorry, go ahead.
No, no, I just wanted to know whether we know, like, can we, is it codified somewhere that once a new model is done, we will revisit it? Because for me, I know that this study will be done, but if we have to go through, jump through hoops to change the zoning regulations should have needed, that's a problem. So we should leave that door open, right? To say if new study requires a new study.
I remember, I remember the last time this was done and the low impact development regulations came through planning commission. So.
I see. Okay. Okay. So it will come through if, if it is needed.
Correct. Right. If the model shows, then yeah, we will go through the planning commission process because it would be updating the zoning code, the critical area zoning code.
Okay, great. And, and do we have a standard cadence for when these models are done? So you're saying twenty five, twenty six. So that's like six, no, seven, eight years. So is that normal or is it as needed? It's a little more ad hoc?
It, it's, it's as needed. I mean, we internally, we're talking that at a minimum every 10 years is what we would like to see. Um, it's kind of a standard, but there, it's not, you know, it's not in the code or anything when we have to do it. Um, but, uh, you know, if there's some big change, like we have a big precipitation change or, um, that some, you know, some land use changes or something, that's when we would definitely want to do it. But on average, probably about 10 years is what we're looking at.
Could we codify that frequency then, please? Um, as, um, the reason I'm saying this is with new development and we are expecting a whole lot of it, right? Um, and weather changing, we don't know, we don't know what we don't know. So just having to study where, where it's at might be a good thing. It's sort of making sure that we are being water smart, you know? Um, so maybe we could codify that. I, I would like this open and add it to a, a new comment and then staff can see if we can add that language.
Uh, sure. And I'm, I'm not sure about those. I'd have to check with our planning.
Right.
Exactly. I'm not expecting a response right now. Okay, great.
It's more like. Yes. Um, but it's more like a, um, an understanding that we're taking this seriously and we're studying it and keeping a close eye on it. That's, that's all. The reassurance of that. So, yeah, if you could keep that part open, Glenn, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay. So that's all the issues on the issues matrix. Um, I know a part of you sent a couple additional comments, um, just kind of what you noted there. Um, and, um, yeah, we can, um, address those issues at the next, uh, study session.
That sounds great. Thank you. I don't want to take up time. That's why I just sent you an email. So thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Thanks. And I will move on to Redmond twenty fifty, phase two B elements, final drafts. Capital facilities, utilities and participation implementation and evaluation study session. Glenn, you're up again.
And that is me again. I'm also, uh, joined by, uh, my great colleague, Odra Cardenas. So, and she'll be talking about her element. We're just going to go through the presentation first, um, and then just, um, you know, any questions there. So, uh, let me reshare my screen. Uh, oh, personally, it's my slides here. Okay. Just get everything back up. Okay. Everyone can see that. Looks like I can see that on the screen. Okay. So the, the request on this is just to review these final drafts in anticipation for the public hearing on April 10th. And then, um, looking for, uh, recommendation to approve these elements, uh, so we can go to council for final adoption. This is kind of, uh, note the process, very similar to what you just saw on the natural environment, critical areas, regulations. Uh, these are updates to the comprehensive plan, uh, three different elements we're discussing tonight. Uh, it's a type six review. So again, this, the process, uh, it goes through technical committee, uh, which is kind of composed of like, um, high kind of staff directors and stuff that, um, uh, review that, uh, for compliance. Uh, and that's just kind of, uh, the lookup numbers, um, for these projects. So these are just some reminder type slides, uh, what, what the requirements are for a capital facilities element. Um, and the thing to note is that in Redmond, uh, generally, because there's a lot of information that could, uh, go on these different types of, uh, facilities that, uh, we, uh, use in a policy CF one and two, we put these in functional plan. So that's like a park plan, a water system plan, um, uh, stormwater plan that we're developing, wastewater plan, uh, where that level of detail, um, is, um, uh, provided. Uh, so, um, as I kind of noted earlier, uh, this slide really just shows, uh, the, the, the big changes from the, the current Redmond twenty thirty plan to the Redmond twenty fifty plan. And like those overall changes. So the main thing really for capital facilities, uh, it's more of a technical document. It was just extending that plan and horizon to twenty fifty. Um, we've updated some level of service standards, uh, issues equity, uh, green infrastructure, um, was kind of a new requirement, uh, in terms. was kind of a new requirement in terms of our inventory. So we added that. Resilience to natural hazards, climate change, and then concurrently, which you'll, you'll start to see also planning commission is that we also made some updates to, well, we saw the park plan that's already been approved, but the wastewater plan and the water system plan are also becoming through planning commission. And those updates were made to satisfy those, these requirements in the capital facilities plan, namely, looking at the growth we have to Redmond to 2050. So it's extended that plan horizon. So that's kind of already what you're seeing new coming out of the capital facilities update. Changes from draft two that you've seen really just updated some of the text and narrative. We've updated the maps. We have a new capital facilities map in there, the school map. We combined a couple of the framework policies as one policy. Staff had noted some changes to the stormwater level service. And then CF 11, this, this might seem very technical, but this is related to our capital investment plan, our six-year project finance thing. And we've heard from staff that they wanted some word in there to allow a little bit more flexibility to amend. We have a kind of a process where we need to add like projects like, like kind of short-term notice that aren't in functional plan so that this we do have a process, but this provides a little bit of policy guidance towards that. This is just, okay, the utilities element. This talks about what the requirement is for public and private utilities. This again provides just a high-level update from the Redmond 2030 plan to the Redmond 2050. New framework policies, consolidated a lot of policies and some energy-type policies that were actually more climate change or resilience were moved out to the new climate element. Got rid of a lot of older programmatic outdated language. And this next bill point, I, I think we heard Devin provide a comment earlier on some of our natural gas policies. And we do actually have a new policy in the utilities element that explicitly states that the city would move away from natural gas. So hopefully that addresses Devin's comment there. But that was something that, you know, we, we heard a lot from the community and it was something we explicitly addressed. I would, I would encourage folks to take a look at the current Redmond 2030 kind of language around natural gas, which actually 10 years ago was about expanding kind of natural gas use in the city. So we removed all those policies while, at the same time, we still have to accommodate the existing kind of infrastructure. This is like a state requirement. So that's what that updated policy says that, you know, the city will move away from gas while also, you know, ensuring existing infrastructure. Also, other policies updated, electric reliability, solid waste policies have been updated. Some policies around hazardous pipeline also just to insert consistency. And this slide just shows the changes from the second draft to the final draft that you have now. Updated policy number, a lot of text changes to the vision statement. Some of the different sections that you can see here. We, we have a new map on energy facilities. And then just a lot of little text changes in the policies. Couple of the ones just to highlight, UT 55, planning commissioner requests PSC or successor be added in that. So we did that. It was also a recommendation to keep including what's now renumbered is UT 64. I think that was the ham radio policy. So that's back in there. And then also on the hazardous pipeline, similar to UT 55, you know, we also just said pipeline operator, consistent language. So it is like some, some said the name of the pipeline and some just said pipeline operator. So we just want to get consistent language on those policies. Okay, let's shoot it over to Odra.
Good evening, commissioners. So the biggest changes from the 2030 complaint to now is that we've basically consolidated a lot of the policies. We had 27 in the previous complaint. Now we have 25, even with the new policies that we added. We added five policies. So we tried to streamline and make it clearer and not as, you know, verbose as it was before. We removed some of the non-inclusive language terms like citizens were stripped from the language there and replaced by resident or community member because we have a lot of, I think around 30% of our, of Redmond's population are non-citizens. So we try to be as inclusive as possible. We are also updated the, the element to support more effective and equitable participation. And the new policies that we added were related to incorporating historically excluded communities into the planning process, adding tribal participation, having a predictable development review process, and also implement equity impact review tools. Next slide, please. And the changes from, from the draft two are very minor, some text changes. And also in December of last year, the ACS census data was released for the 2022 for the five years. So we updated those data points that we had in there and we tried to emphasize diverse and active participation and also partnerships with our community-based organizations. Those were like the main changes, but it's not very significant changes from draft two. And so today we are, we're gonna go over the matrix after this and next we are having a public hearing on April 10th and next study session on March 27, sorry. And then we are, we, we hope we can get a recommendation from planning commission on April 24th. So we could go over now on the, the matrix, right, Glenn? We're gonna do now.
Uh, yes. Is, is there any questions or comments before we jump on to the issues matrix?
Don't see any.
All right. Zoom in here a little bit. Okay, we'll start with the capital facilities. There was some questions around kind of what the level of service standards were and kind of like, but, but the kind of the concepts there. And there was some staff, there was also some questions, I believe Chair Nichols had regarding the fire ones there and our fire staff provided some nice response on that, so.
Yeah, answered my question. So closed for my part.
I think a party had some additional comments.
I, I really like, again, these, these compilations make a lot of sense to me and it's really good. It's kind of structured. It should appear somewhere so that we have a table of, you know, here's where you look for the service standards. You know, it's referenced here, kind of a correlation matrix of some sort. It doesn't have to give the numbers, but it just has to tell us where to look, right? So this is, that's what this is doing and this is great. So it will be nice to have it. It's a nice to have, not a must-have, but yeah, so.
Can we close out this issue?
Yeah, we could close out this issue with the caveat that maybe look at adding this to the narrative. So, yeah.
All right. See, number two was closed. Public facilities, I think this was Chair Weston.
Yeah, so I this is one of those places where I really appreciate the education on which things go in which plans. I do want to make sure, I, I did want to make sure that maintenance was specifically called out, especially after things like the senior center where it wasn't really a maintenance issue exactly, but it and like an upkeep issue that found the problem. So I don't know. I would just, I appreciate knowing that it's covered. I also still wouldn't mind a policy to do it, but I'm willing to close.
Thank you. See, number four, we closed. Number five is still open. This was kind of talking about that old CF 2.5 and how we kind of rolled that into there. And this is kind of additional response there. We followed up with our emergency management and fire department and some other staff. They kind of provided this, this response. In terms of hazards, generally, you know, we, we referenced the King County has a mitigation plan. Redmond has an annex also that we're updating. So we kind of identify kind of our, our hazards. We use those documents there, so.
I'm fine with it. I'm also fine with six. So we, like, to my mind, both can close, but vice versa, Weston.
Yeah, it's, I, I think it lends clarity to specifically call them out, but I can understand your answer also. So this is another one where I disagree, but I'm happy to close.
Thank you.
We'll chalk it up under personal style.
And six, Pana said we can close.
Yes.
Okay. So I'm just taking notes here. All right. Okay, let's jump over to utilities. See, the first one's closed, closed. Grid flexibility. Oh yeah, this one, number four is open. So the last discussion in December was just the language regarding to PSC or successor. So we added that for this draft.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine to close that if Chair Weston is.
Uh, but yeah, I had one, I just wanted to double check with Commissioner Pana. It, the original conversation was more about if there are people making like energy choices for their neighborhood or for basically alternatives. So it wasn't necessarily that like there's a contract with PSC now and then later someone would, some other company might come in.
Right now, everybody is under PSC, so successor is anything which comes after. That's how I interpret it. So I'm fine with it. But if you want to clarify, I don't know what the word would be though. Cause they view successor in other policies as well for consistency.
Yeah, and I, I would say this also relates to like a facilities plan. So whoever our energy provider is, they have to develop like facilities plans to like identify what their infrastructure, what their plans are. So that's really what this whole policy is about is having that legal structure that to make sure whoever the utility provider is actually like has a plan for their like current and future facilities. So really, we're saying PSC or successor, they, you know, will use their facilities plan to help identify like our land use thing. So that kind of meets a requirement for utilities planted.
Okay, thank you. I'm good.
Uh, number five, let's see, I think there was yeah, there was something about UT 87 regarding just telecommunications towers. So yeah, we included that policy and I think we, we simplified it in the language there. We removed all the kind of simple points on kind of aesthetics and stuff, so. I believe that was from
That was a joint one. I'm counting on my portion of that.
Mine too.
Okay.
So we could close this.
Five, close, okay. See, uh, six was the amateur radio. Discussion about the policy regarding that and that policy is included in the final draft.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that. Happy to close.
Uh, see, seven is closed.
Yeah, we can close eight as well and nine, only one part. All the other parts with nine D, I want to just talk about a bit. Nine D, we were talking about so monitoring for the, so we could say other measures, including monitoring well drawdown. The reason I'm saying this is we do need to know what's happening in the properties also. Whoever's on the private wells. So I think it will be nice to do that, but again, if, if that's okay, then we can add that language and then close it.
Uh, yeah, I, I would, I'm not sure if we are legally allowed to monitor people's private wells, but that, that's something that I'll check with. Unfortunately, Lauren and a lot of the staff that would know a lot more about that than I do can probably provide an answer, but that's probably why the language is there. But I, I will check on that. We can provide an answer. But I think, yeah, there may not be a regulatory aspect to us actually monitoring. So I just wanted to caveat that. Yeah, but we'll check on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
But all the rest can be closed that are all the other parts. That's A, B, C, and E and F. So it's just that one piece which is open. Thank you.
All right. And that is it for utilities. So yeah, we'll, we'll come back, whatever additional questions there on that policy at the next session. And I'll turn it back over to Odra.
Thank you, Glenn. So we have several issues open for the participation implementation and evaluation element. I think we got some comments from Commissioner Pana.
Yes, uh, thank you, Odra. So I think we can close two and three. It's great. I think there was a bit formatting issue on number two, but we can figure that out. But one, I was wondering if we could, so I understand that the implementation and evaluation program sits outside of this. So I'm wondering if we can reference it here, which means that we require a document like that to be there and that can be updated on the side.
Yes, so actually Policy PI 23 references a little bit. I can share my screen real quick, Glenn. Just to show that that policy here, which is to establish a program for measuring the effective effectiveness of the comprehensive plan as implemented. So here's where we are referencing it and where you commented is PI 24. So I don't know if you want to emphasize it also in PI 24 or just leave the PI 23?
It's basically, maybe we should tie it back and emphasize it simply because like you're establishing a program, but you're also asking for community participation on, on that program, right? So you want to have both, actually, I think.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just stop sharing. Can you share the matrix again, Glenn? Yeah, okay. And yeah, two and three, you said we could close, right? Yes. So the four is Commissioner Weston where it was similar to, to Commissioner Pana on having like, like some kind of measurement and I don't know if you're okay with this one.
Yeah, so I think so. I just want to clarify your response a little bit. So I think the city does a really good job measuring their equity and impact now. But what I, what this comment was really trying to get at is measuring that the responses that the city is drawing from, or like the voices that they're hearing, that there's a measurement of whether or not we're actually hearing like a slice across the city or if we're hearing like some loud voices and then some voices are completely underrepresented. So it's almost like metrics about the metrics.
About the, about the, yeah, about who we reach. That's what you're referring to, right?
Right. So it's not just the equity of the policies that Redmond puts into place. It's really about the equity of the feedback that Redmond is soliciting.
Yeah, we do have some policy language on that in, let me just find it. It's that, that the, the feedback should represent the diversity of Redmond and I think it's on the first just find that policy and I can share my screen again. On real quick.
Policy one, maybe?
Yeah, here like incursion, but that represents Redmond's diverse community on issues of significance, especially those communities most impacted by proposed changes. So I don't know if you are okay with this or do you want to have like a more stronger language here on, on metrics since?
No, I actually, I agree with the policy. I would just encourage Redmond as they create that program to include, to include the metrics to actually measure who they're hearing from. So
Yeah, okay, so yeah.
Part of the program definition would be that this is measurable and you can just kind of tell at a glance, like, are you hearing everyone you need to be hearing?
Okay, so no change to policy, but when we come back with the program, then we can, uh, we will include that. It's that.
That would be lovely. Yes, thank you.
So we can close this one too.
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, I think that's all the issues matrix. So any other comments or discussion? Uh, if not, we can come back twenty-seventh. I think we're just, I think we just have one, one issue um, to to clarify.
I don't see any other. It sounds good. Great.
Great, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Odra. Okay, now we move on to Redmond twenty fifty residential regulations study session. And Glenn, let's take a break and then we go to Ian.
Thank you, Glenn. Okay, so we'll be discussing residential regulations today. We have a mighty team of Odra, Tim and myself to walk through it. We'll go through our presentation and then walk through the issues matrix. Now remember, this is in advance of a public hearing at the next meeting. We'll also intend to bring more um, kind of more hands-on graphics at the next meeting as well. So please keep that in mind for this presentation. We kind of just worked through the qualitative topics that were presented at the last meeting. So yep, there's our agenda. We'll do the introduction, go through the high-level topics that were identified on our matrix, uh, then go through the timeline before jumping into the matrix itself. As a reminder, our residential zoning districts, there will be three total, but right now we're talking about two. Our neighborhood residential, which is our R one through R eight consolidation, which implements middle housing. And of course, our neighborhood multifamily, which is consolidating our various multifamily zones of today. The commission was interested in our use tables. While the package of redline proposed amendments to the zoning code had many very explicit amendment proposals, the use tables were included just as a reference. The full tables are going to be a continued discussion. In fact, we had another meeting today about this. Um, so we look forward to bringing those forwards uh, later as we can integrate it more fully into an actual holistic amended use table. Importantly, the commission wanted to know if things like cafes, daycares and home-based businesses would be implemented. Yes, we will allow those as uses. We will streamline pathways to get in those actually on the ground. But exactly how will be a conversation for a later date. Affordability. This was another big uh, conversation point of interest at the last meeting. Now, there are many subtopics to this conversation. Uh, and luckily we have some background on the actual mechanisms. Those were added to the issues matrix. Some of the high level there is that, one, we already as a city have mandatory inclusionary zoning, which applies to ownership units. That means the city of Redmond and our arch stewardship partners have processes in place to get those covenants bound and to ensure that the houses get to households who are eligible for them. This includes both conventional detached single-family homes and a variety of other structures, including condominiums. Now, for the specific recommendations that will be coming forward for neighborhood residential, that kind of requirement of how we're going to get from six units per lot up to that eight if affordability requirement units are or affordability requirements are met. Well, that's still ongoing analysis. Arch has that peer work group of member jurisdictions and they have two sets of consultants. I'm optimistic that we'd be able to have at least preliminary results, maybe by May. But as a reminder, for this package itself, we are just moving forward with placeholder text. So we know that inclusionary zoning, it will need to apply to neighborhood residential. We know that there's likely going to be a need for some flexibility in the form of alternative compliance or fee-in lieu, uh, just because of the the scaling of the actual development and sales. The rental AMIs will likely be deeper than ownership AMIs. That's that's par for the course, as you recall from our overlake efforts. But until the analysis is completed by Arch and their consultants, we're not really going to know any of the specifics. And I will pass it over to Odra to walk us through some of the technical development standard terms and definitions.
Uh, yes, thank you, Ian. So I know the commission had some questions on on some terms and we we put here some of the the questions that you included, which um, we took them from the the zoning code definition section. So that's, they might be a little bit technical, but we can go over them if you have any questions. So the lot is a fractional part of dividend lands having fixed boundaries, being a sufficient area and dimension to meet minimum zoning requirements for width and area. It includes tracks and parcels. And here we see like a little um, aerial um, photograph on what different lots and parcels, right? And the coverage is what um, percentage of the lot is covered by any structure. It includes like the primary and accessory structure. So all of that included in in as a slot coverage.
Odra, I have a question. Would driveways be included in lot coverage?
They would not. Just a structure.
Thank you.
Uh, so, yes. So setbacks is the line this between the property, the distance that we are going to pull back from the property line. So distance between property land and the corresponding parallel setback line. So here we put this illustration here that it's in the code, how we are kind of measuring the building setbacks. Um, I don't know if there are any questions on this. And also Tim is here. He's with the vendor review, so he's like the master of all these terms and can answer any of your questions, like difficult questions. Are there any, any questions on what a building setback is? It's just like imaginary lines so that we're going to leave uh, free of any structure. Go to the next slide. Floor area ratio is something that you're now going to be using more in in our regulations. And um, it's the gross floor area of building or structures minus the parking. And it is divided by by the lot. So here, if you see the illustration, it takes like B and C and it divides by A. So the the total site and the the actual like lowers or structures. And if we have like a one, it's like, it includes the whole parcel. If it's like five, it's like half of the parcel and that's how how we're going to be. This is, for example, in the multifamily, we are going to be using FAR as a density instead of dwelling units per acre now. Can we go to the next slide? Oh yes, this one is, um, so we should not look at um, at all of these constraints like alone, we have to look at them like as a whole. So for example, if it says hundred percent in previous surface, that would not um, be, if you have like setbacks, it would not be, of course, hundred percent in previous surface. So we have to look at them as a whole and it's not just the maximum structure that is going to be uh, the the main thing that's coming into a parcel. Let me go to the next one. Oh yes, so this part, there was also some questions on the design standards on what we meant like having four design features. And this is trying to give uh, flexibility on what they can choose to have uh, some kind of design. And it's like color or the roof shape orientation, um, variation of the structure with um, some kind of modulation of the facade, materials in the facade, window treatment. So anything that can give us like some kind of design features in in and these structures, these middle housing structures. And also the modulation that we are proposing right now is thirty feet of structure along the street. And this is uh, to reduce barriers to getting middle housing, having flexibility and also that these structures like fit into the the neighborhoods right now. So we don't get like some kind of box that doesn't really have any modulation uh, or regards to for the, to the context, right? In the neighborhoods. Can we go to the next slide? So we are having a public hearing at the next meeting, March twenty nine, twenty-seventh. And then um, another study session on April tenth. And now if you have any questions, we can go over them and if not, we can go directly to the, to the issues matrix. And next time we're going to bring more illustrations on the specific like site and how it both look if we, we have like different parcels with different shapes and stuff like that. So people can see like in a practical way how it, how this will be implemented in a real parcel.
Cool. So I'm really looking forward to all those illustrations. I had a question because I was rereading um, all of this and then especially the additional information about setbacks and everything with an eye to the flexibility and the middle housing. And I, and the potential for like infill development where lots are getting subdivided into these smaller units. And I still just, I'm really coming around the question if people choose to do townhomes that go to the lot line. Is that allowed? That seems like it would be a great option in some of the, like if you're keeping the fifty percent, but you're basically saying we want attached housing. To my read, it doesn't seem like that's allowed in a lot of these neighborhoods. Um, but it, like talking about it, it sounds like there's, there are goals for things like that or like the idea of a apartment building that has like two top floor apartments and two bottom floor, like the two over two style. Like to me, I'm reading this, I'm like, I don't think that's allowed, but it seems like when we've talked about it in the group, it should be. So I can't tell if I'm just misreading the setbacks. Or if it's, um,
Yeah.
if they're actually prohibited and like large areas like grass on, for example.
Most definitely allowed. Um, so those typologies, you know, the different typologies, um, which range from, you know, a detached unit. So let's just use six. So we can have up to six, six dwelling units per lot. You know, provided you can meet the dimensional standards and and other applicable regulatory requirements. You, the choice is yours in terms of how you, how you design those units. So you can certainly do, you know, six detached units. You could do three duplexes, two triplexes, a fourplex and a twoplex or a sixplex. Or you could do, you know, in a flak, flat, uh, stacked flat type of thing with three units on top and three units on the bottom. The, the regulations are intended to be agnostic as those typologies, provided you can meet the applicable regulatory requirements. So for example, you know, a townhome, um, I think what's important to understand is that the setback requirements. Um, so an easier term to understand uh, in terms of set, instead of setback is yard. Right? So that just means front setback means your front yard, rear, side, same. So for a townhome, what we are requiring is that the setbacks apply to the boundaries of that original lot. Okay? And then you have to comply with the setbacks based upon those original parcel lines. If you then want to subdivide those units for individual ownership, you've got a couple of different options. One is you can create actual lot lines um, and have those zero, do a zero lot line development where basically the property line for an individual lot goes through a party wall. Um, you can do that through a specific type of subdivision, um, which is called a unit lot subdivision. Or what most people choose to do, instead of going through that extra step of doing an actual subdivision, is they simply condominiumize the lots or condominiumize the airspace within those units. The city doesn't regulate condominiumization. We don't review those. Uh, so it's just a matter of filing an airspace map that meets applicable state requirements to be able to do a condo. So yes, there, it's, the setbacks aren't going to be required um, within the lots or whatever. If you put a fourplex there, you can basically divide those into four individual unit lots um, through what's called a zero lot line provision. Um, so that you can allow subdivision um, with ownership of the underlying property uh, through that process if you choose.
That clarifies so much. Thank you so much for explaining that.
Sure. I've been explaining that to a lot of people in the city. So, because it is, it is confusing because a lot of people, um, you know, they they get tied up with the ownership piece as opposed to the form piece, the typology piece. And those are actually kind of different things. I mean, they're obviously related. They're, you know, hand and glove, but they're, they're two different concepts. And most of these dimensional standards that you're seeing changed are primarily for the purposes of developing those middle housing typologies. Um, as opposed, and a lot of the regulations aren't necessarily going to apply to that because those are intended for actual subdivision. So if you did a short plat, you know, those are the standards like a lot width circle. Um, a lot frontage, things like that. That's, that's going to be for subdivision. For development of an individual site, those are things like height setbacks, lot coverage and previous surface coverage, things of that nature.
Okay, that helps so much. And especially, um, I've really been looking across the way at what Kirkland's doing. Um, just because it's close to me. So it's, I can walk and see a lot of construction um, and a lot of different types of buildings going up that are kind of adding density. Um, but just like, it wasn't clear to me. And it's not clear from watching things come on the market, what that actually means in terms of ownership or the lot lines. It can get very muddled. So this actually explains much more clearly what the options are.
So there's really kind of three scenarios um, that that for ownership of any of these different types of typologies. So you can have one, let's, let's use a, let's use a fourplex, for example, because that's a, a good, so townhomes, right? Four townhomes. You can do, you can, under the regulations, me, Mr. Developer, I can come in and I can build my four townhomes. Now, what happens after that can go kind of three ways. One is I can, I can sell that to someone or I can keep it for myself and use it as a rental property where the ownership of all four units would be held by one, one party. Another option would be, I want to be able to sell those for individual ownership. Um, and I want to do that through the the least restrictive processes possible. That would be a condominium. So you'd basically map the airspace within those units. You'd create what's called a common interest community um, for the condo. And then you would, you would record that with a clerk and recorder. King County. The third option is to do what I described earlier, which is a unit lot subdivision. And in that scenario, you're actually creating physical lot lines that go down through the party walls and you own actually a piece of the property underneath your condo with some private yard. And then the balance of the property is owned in common. So those are hybrids of and permutations and combinations of those things. So, you know, that that's basically the relationship between kind of forms of ownership, uh, tenure, rental or ownership, um, and the actual typologies of the the middle housing.
Great. I can think of examples of all of those. So that is really helpful.
Commissioner Parna.
Oh, thank you. I think ten, this this has been really interesting because we, I can actually see it like a tree structure, right? I mean, you want X, you do this and then here are the other options. So maybe because this is something that we are adding uh, for the whole community, maybe like how-to guides for a homeowner, right? Uh, it will be really useful, right? Not just a how-to guide, but a decision tree before that.
Yeah.
Because a lot of people may not go to a developer or subdivide their lots. They might just do an ADU or what are their options, right?
Yep.
So good tree-like structures will be great.
Yeah, so I think it's important to, I couldn't agree with you more. Because it is new and it is confusing. Um, and different people are going to come at it from kind of different objectives and perspectives. So I think it's important to get good, clear, understandable information out there for people to understand their options. Um, but before we do that, or Odra, uh, Ian, Kim and myself are are undertaking a very similar process within the city staff, right? Um, and that's because this is going to be a very different process for everyone to get used to and understand. And so in parallel to adopting these zoning regulations, um, we're also working very diligently on how that process is going to change. And those process discussions and specifics are are going to drive that type of information that you're looking for, you know? And that's going to be very comprehensive. It's not just going to be the zoning. Uh, it's going to be, okay, how does this affect your utilities? You know, how do you need to meter things? What kind of service lines do you need? Um, what, what do you do in terms of stormwater? So, you know, how do you deal with kind of fire requirements? Um, and so we want to have kind of a comprehensive guide. And so we want to have kind of a comprehensive guide, because I believe that if we have that type of comprehensive information, we're going to give more people the opportunity to take advantage of this, which is ultimately going to deliver more housing units, which is the goal.
Yeah, thank you. Absolutely right. And having it in one place when everything's been sorted out and figured out will be great. Because I would just download a PDF and kind of sift through what it means and maybe there are checklists within that PDF which I'll need to go through the process. So that's kind of exciting. Thank you.
Yeah, no, for sure. Those, those kind of flow charts, I think, are really important for people, you know, because then they can kind of chart their own destiny, so to speak, right? Like, here's a, here's a key decision point that I need to make and, you know, if I decide this, then it's going to take me down this direction, whereas if I decide that, you know? So I find that having that type of information for people to utilize is, is very, very valuable.
Agreed. Thank you.
Any other questions on the PowerPoint or do we want to hop into the matrix?
Looks like the matrix.
See a few matrix? Let's do it. The first item on our issues matrix was that broader topic just about many of the terms and definitions. Do we feel comfortable closing this? All right. Thank you.
Do you ever mind zooming a little bit on the?
I would embrace the opportunity.
It's so tiny right now. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a lot of content.
So yeah, if you have questions about any of these things, you know, we'll be providing graphics at the next meeting, as, as we already talked about. But, you know, if you have further questions, you know, it's, these are distinct and unique terms, right? They're, they're the world that we live in, you know? And so my parents never understood what I did for a living and so I'm very well skilled, I think, at explaining to people who don't have any understanding about what it is that planners do for a living. Like, this is what I do and this is what this means. So give me the opportunity and I'm happy to do that.
Thank you, Tim. Issue two was the question about how the regulations scale, right? We know that there's a variety of different lot sizes and the answer here was, they typically don't scale with the lot itself, but rather with the number of dwelling units on the lot.
Leave open.
Yeah, Commissioner Van Lyman isn't here, so.
Number three was that background information on how ownership will work intersecting with affordability requirements.
Problems? Okay. My take on this, so I really appreciate the material from Arch, just that was included in the packet. Like, it's nice to see just how that's already operating. And then it sounds like there'll be more material coming later on this. So to me, that's a great answer for now and then we'll continue later.
I think it's important to understand that, from my perspective, middle housing, as adopted by the legislature, you know, their intent, it's really a supply solution. So it's coming from the supply side. So it's trying to, you know, make more housing units available in more different locations. And so it's not an affordability requirement per se as adopted by the legislature. It's really to try to juice the system, if you will, to allow for, you know, up to X number of lot, of units on a lot where only one was permitted previously. And so, you know, there's, it's a market-based type of approach. Now, obviously, there's ways that you can then layer in more regulatory approaches to affordability, but I think it's, it's, you know, one, there's not a silver bullet. If there was one, we wouldn't be in the sorry state of affairs that we're in relative to housing costs. So this is kind of coming at it from the supply side generally. So I just think it's, you know, that, that's just something for you to ponder as you consider affordability from like a broader perspective.
Commissioner Sheffron?
Thank you. So, we had quite the robust discussion when this came up last, our last meeting. And I think what I didn't realize is when we're talking about affordability in this context, is it was tied to Arch. And for some reason, I didn't realize that. So it makes so much more sense now, because I understand Arch pretty well and I've, on the private side, I've been really involved in some of their projects. So, and I understand how the covenants work, et cetera. So I can't exactly rescind all of my comments from a couple of weeks ago, but I really appreciate the elaboration here, so thank you. And from my standpoint, it can be closed as well.
Commissioner Parana, are you okay with closing?
Yes, please. Thank you. Yeah, and I'm also looking forward to more details as they come along, because I think for me, it's, it feels like half the story, but I know that that's what we're going to get right now, so, yeah.
That's a great way to phrase it too, Commissioner Parana, is, right? We kind of have the pieces for the actual structure, the development itself, and then the precision of the economic affordability requirements from our mandatory inclusionary zoning, that is the second half of the story. I know no one likes waiting for a sequel, but hopefully it builds anticipation.
Don't say that. Sequels can be very bad, Ian. Don't go there.
Godfather II was great.
Yes, they can, and Empire Strikes Back. So sometimes the sequel is superior. Not always, but sometimes.
Okay, yeah. Down to four. Oh, Tim?
Say something, Tim. We did, did you?
No, I'm fine.
Okay.
It's fine. Go ahead.
Number four is that discussion about unique lots and development capacity. We tried to approach this question from a variety of different possibilities while recognizing that, oh boy, that's a lot of scenarios. So we could go in basically limitless positions. So we tried to provide context and then hopefully at the next meeting when we have those graphics that will help robust the answer even more.
This was a great start. And I think that the graphics are going to help a lot, because it's really, once you get into a discussion where you're like, oh, that on a lot, then it starts making a little bit more sense. And like the kite-shaped lot where you're like building an interior cul-de-sac off of an existing cul-de-sac, it just, so anyway, I thought this captured it well. If we could ever leave it open until we've had a chance to look at the graphic examples, that'd be great.
Parking for attached units and ADUs and emergency access. So the high-level takeaways here are, there will not be parking requirements for some of those structures, like ADUs and cottages. There will be some parking requirement for conventional residential dwelling units, or I shouldn't say conventional, but other types. And then there's no proposed amendments to emergency access requirements, which means all of those standards now are still going to exist. With that said about the parking itself, it's important to remember that the city require, establishes parking minimums, but developments could choose to do more if they want to. And, you know, depending on market conditions, that may be what's opted for.
So this is a good example of how regulations interact with each other, just as a point. So as Ian said, oftentimes, you know, for, for perceived or real marketability purposes, you know, developers will want to provide more parking. You know, the, the reality of that is the parking has to go somewhere and the parking consumes some portion of the lot, whether that's in a structure. So if it's even a detached, you know, garage, well, that's going to count against lot coverage. And, you know, if it's a surface parking spot, that's going to be a hard surface, that's going to count against impervious surface coverage. And so as a developer and a designer, you have to kind of pick and choose which of these things you feel is most important. If you provide a two-car garage, that may affect your ability, you may have to sacrifice a unit to be able to accommodate that, just because that's what you feel the, the market demands. And so, you know, this is going to evolve, I think. You know, I think we need to, as we urbanize, I think real urban places, a street is, is not a street. It's, a street is something that is used for multiple purposes, including accommodating parking. And so, you know, a lot of people don't have a parking space, even if they have a car, and they'll just have to kind of rely on the availability of street parking in those particular situations. So you can, you know, obviously availability of transit is a huge part of that equation. But, you know, it's an example of that slide that Odra had where, you know, it's not, everything isn't a complete picture. You know, you have to, these things interact with each other and, you know, designers have to make choice, developers have to make choices in terms of what they're going to provide to fully comply.
Thanks.
So that actually leads into my follow-up comment on this really well. So I think that there's a little bit of a disconnect between what builders can sell and what actually makes a safe parking situation on a street. So I'm going to just go to my street because I know it well. Right now, we have, it was built in the seventies. It's short, it has two cul-de-sacs. We have a ton of kids playing outside, we have a ton of bike commuters, and we have a ton of cars. And so right now, everyone can more or less park in a driveway or a few people where their rental properties with a lot of adults will park on the front yard on days like trash day, or if people are coming to do work on a house and they need to park trucks, so that there's still a flow of traffic. When that happens, it's a lot harder to be a pedestrian or a bike commuter, because there's just a safety issue of, like, the sidewalk isn't always bikable, et cetera. So, like, when I look at something like that, if we ever had a situation where multiple of those properties redeveloped to having many ADUs and they weren't required to, required, like, provide parking, there are only 19 homes on my street, but that could, that could get really big, really fast from a car, like, street parking situation. So, and I've also looked at places like Seattle where it's, most of, there are neighborhoods where the entire neighborhood was developed really before car parking was a thing. And so you have a lot of street parking. And what ends up happening is those are very difficult streets to navigate, because there's so much street parking. And then you have days where there has, like, they basically cordon off and say, like, on Thursdays, you just can't park here, for example, so that you can get, like, trashed through or whatever. And so I don't, I feel like if, like, just leaving it and saying, like, well, we'll use the streets is totally a reasonable option to a point, but then I think it's going to create problems. And if people are buying properties where they, really the only parking option is the street parking, like, that's going to overflow very quickly in some of these neighborhoods that were built in the seventies, like, designed around cul-de-sacs. So it just, I, I just, in terms of keeping things like livable and safe, I think there needs to be a little bit more thought about the reality of what the car parking looks like.
Yeah. Yeah, I hear you. You know, I grew up in the seventies, so I know your subdivision quite well, even though I've never visited there. So what I'll say as maybe a counterpoint to that is that there is no better traffic calming mechanism than parallel parking on both sides of a street. It narrows the perceived travel lane so much that people drive much slower. And so it's a much safer condition in terms of, you know, pedestrians, bicyclists, kids playing in the street, because the vehicle speeds are so much lower than they would be if there was no parallel parking on the sides of those streets. I live in the neighborhood in Seattle that you described and it's, it, people walk very You know, people bicycle very safely because the cars have to go so fast. And only, it's one-way traffic. You can't, only, you know, it's effectively like a one-lane bridge. So you have to wait for the other car to come through or you have to pull into someone's, you know, the space in front of their driveway for people to pass. I mean, the vehicular speeds are literally like five miles an hour. And so from a safety perspective, I think that that's a very safe street. You know? Now, is there ultimately going to be a capacity issue? You know, ultimately, yes. But I think that that's, that's the point of providing other modes of transportation, whether that be bike commuters or whether that be, you know, better transit options, because, you know, I don't know what transit service is like in your neighborhood, but transit needs density to be supported, right? Transit and density go hand in hand, because that's ridership. And, and the more density you have, you know, the more you can link those types of things together to get better ridership and more bus routes ultimately. So I hear what you're saying, but there's, you know, I think there's gives and takes from, from both sides of that equation. In terms of trash collection, we have rollout service in my neighborhood and, you know, the trash trucks come through and that's another great trash calming measure, you know? Because you can't get through because the trash is being collected, you know? Same as school buses. You know, the school buses run through, they stop. Every car, no cars go in any directions when the bus stop is picking up or dropping off kids. So, you know, I think that in a certain sense makes things safer. I understand that that's a big change from the situation that is currently in your neighborhood, but I do think there's two sides to the same coin.
Oh, totally. And I completely agree with what you're saying. What I'm trying to highlight, I think, is that when you take a cul-de-sac infrastructure, especially, you can never send a school bus down my street. Like, it can't, they can't get around the cul-de-sacs, they're too narrow, they have plantings.
It's a big bus.
Well, they're not, because they have plantings in the middle that are owned by the city.
Oh, okay.
So we have very tall trees on our street, which I love, but it's, it's not like it's a open space where people can navigate it. It's, like, this is a very tight space. We do, my entire street right now is parallel parked where it's not blocking a driveway. So that's already today with the 1970s lot lines, with the combination of the cul-de-sac situation.
Yeah.
So I'm just, I'm looking forward to this. I agree totally with what you're saying about you need the density to promote better public transit, but in the meantime, I just, I do think that there's an argument here for, until we reach that density, we still need a parking spot for each unit.
Yeah, and that's, you know, that's, I think, the challenge, you know, that we have to, we have to challenge ourselves to see that future. You know, because if we do allow parking spaces and we overpark these sites, a couple things happen. One is we lose units, we get less residential units, less middle housing units. The other thing is parking spaces are never going to go away. So even if there's improved transit service to that neighborhood, the likelihood of someone tearing out their parking space in response to that is probably very small. And so maybe to, in an obtuse way perhaps, to circle back to a question that we talked about, that Tom Hardy answered, relative to what can we do to, to better protect the Evans Creek watershed? And his answer was, well, we have to go back and when redevelopment opportunities present themselves, we have to make sure that that redevelopment, you know, does a much better job of cleaning stormwater and, and retaining stormwater than what was originally planned when it initially developed. And that, it's the same kind of thinking of how we have to apply new thoughts and new ways to improve these existing neighborhoods that were planned around cars and single-family houses. So maybe that's not a, a direct connection, but I think it's that type of thinking and utilizing those opportunities to, to change these neighborhoods, because that's what this is all about. It's changing, you know, low-density, single-family neighborhoods that were designed that way with certain types of infrastructure, including street infrastructure, to being more walkable, more connected, to support different modes of transportation.
I totally agree. I just, I do think that there's a transition there, possibly.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's, and I agree with your point about people won't take down a parking spot once it's there, but maybe... Possibly. So it's, and I agree with your point about people won't take down a parking spot once it's there, but maybe the first however many homes until this next building, or like this next review cycle, do have one parking spot. And then, after that, maybe there's more density, there's better transit options, and then it would be more feasible.
No, and your point, quite frankly, is a good one. You know, I think the future is unwritten. So as much as we try to plan and think how we're going to peel out these scenarios, you know, we're going to learn, you know, in the first year, two years, three years of rolling out these regulations, we may think we know how it's going to, you know, happen, but we don't know that for sure. And so, to me, ongoing evaluation of the actual built environment outcomes within different neighborhoods is going to be really critical. And then, you know, if we're not getting what we want, well, it's incumbent upon us to figure out why and how we need to maybe adjust regulations to get where we are. So, for example, if we're finding that people are, are, you know, there's a lot of parking being provided as part of middle housing, right? And and that's not a great outcome because we're not getting the kind of unit counts that we're looking for. We'll need to think about that and fix it. If the opposite is happening where, you know, nobody is providing any parking and, you know, your street is a, is a permanent parking lot, basically, that that's an equally bad outcome. And so we need to figure out how to fix that as well. So, yeah, I I I hear what you're saying.
Great, thank you.
I had a question about, if we're still talking about number five, the proposed amendments to, no proposed amendments to the emergency access requirements. How does that work if you have, like, units tucked away? Like, if it's a developer, you know, subdividing, yes, that whole thing will be taken care of, I'm guessing. But what if somebody has a unit in their backyard? How do we ensure, or shouldn't we have something that says, there should be some kind of direct access? Or, you know, maybe in the first responders or something, I don't know.
Yeah, so a couple of things there. We currently deal with that currently, for, for example, for accessory dwelling units. You know, so those typically go in the rear yard. And when those building permits come in for accessory dwelling units, the fire department is a reviewer of those permits, and they ensure that they have adequate access, not just to fight a fire, but also for, you know, an ambulance type of thing, a medical unit. So they do that. Oftentimes, you know, that's going to entail, for example, you know, providing a driveway to a certain point in the lot that's going to be accessible by an emergency apparatus. It can also involve things like in sprinklering, where otherwise sprinklering wouldn't be required. It could involve, you know, certain types of smoke detection or alarming systems, you know, to make that unit safer. And so that that's all going to be bundled up in the, in the review of these specific middle housing developments on individual lots. You know, that will be reviewed, you know, it's going to vary from lot to lot, obviously, based upon the dimensions and what's being proposed, but compliance with the International Fire Code is is something that's done for every building permanent in the city.
Thank you for that. So basically, whatever is currently required will will be just moved, shifted over into this, but it will also be specific to a site or a certain condition.
Yes, it's, it's all, it's basically like the building code. You know, the International Residential Code, for example, right? That's, all of these will be reviewed under that by a plans examiner. Same for the International Fire Code, all of these individual developments, when the building permits roll through, that will be reviewed by one of the fire reviewers for compliance with the applicable provisions of the IFC.
Got it. Thank you. We can close this. All right, Susan?
Yes, thank you.
Number six, design standards. Commissioner Weston?
First of all, thank you for the extra definitions and explanation and all of this here. And my kids actually found a counter example that has helped me understand why this is necessary. They found a a single family home that's going up in bridal trails that is just a huge box, and it is enormous. And now I understand exactly what we are talking about. So anyway, thank you for spelling this out. I really appreciate that there's the final bullet point that's about the flexibility, that there could be more innovations and we're not limiting it to something. Saying like, you have to have different root, like, it it started to feel really prescriptive and sort of suffocating. But anyway, yeah, thank you so much for this. I understand. And you can close.
Maximum height. The question was centered around why we have exceptions to maximum height compared to just having, well, make that the actual maximum height. And the main reason there is it's compliant with how our code approaches it. Generally, the bulk of the structure is the maximum height, and then kind of accessory things are allowed to have exceptions above it.
So the major counter example I'm thinking of is when I think middle housing that has things on the roof, what I'm thinking is the Seattle attached unit style where you have three or four buildings. They're all attached and they all have roof decks. So you have like two or three stories of living and then a fourth story effectively on top. I don't know if we care, but this seems like it's pushing towards, that's a very popular style right now, just across the lake. I'm starting to see it in Kirkland. It could definitely come to Redmond. I'm not sure if we care, but it just, it seems like it might not just be about the building mass, it could be like, what level outdoor living is happening at? Possibly. And so that was my major question mark. If people have like a full three stories and then a roof deck, that's a really different experience than not.
So, yeah, that's, you know, that's going to, Odr, maybe you can help me here, but a roof deck is is going to be an occupiable floor, right? Under the building code. So that's, that's going to potentially regulate how that happens. So, you know, we currently allow these types of things because it's, you know, for example, not to allow roof decks per se, but, you know, things like chimneys. You know, I'll date myself, since you all knew that I grew up in the seventies, like a TV antenna. You know, sometimes rooftop mechanical equipment, you know, things of that. Things, things of that nature, that's the intent here. It's not to, you know, really change how we measure compliance with height to allow certain things or disallow certain things. I think these amendments are really intended for clarity about how we measure that. And, you know, we can certainly, you know, take a look at this, you know, a second time through, and just make sure that there's no unintended consequences of of how we're doing this. Because that that isn't the intent, to be honest, is to allow allow that or change the way that we regulate it currently.
So do the roof decks go into FAR, or is that, they wouldn't count as that?
Only if they're covered. So once, generally, you know, once, floor area ratio is really a measure of bulk and mass. And so, things that are covered that have real or perceived mass because they have a cover or something like that, that's when they start to get added into floor area ratio. And those covers also are going to be problematic relative to the height requirement because we're not intending to allow those type of roof structures on top of what is theoretically already the roof.
Okay, so maybe just getting like very specific about that scenario, because it's such a common one locally.
So you're looking to add a roof deck, or?
No, I just, I see them so much. And like, there's a lot of the new development that's coming in Kirkland, like downtown and west of Market, where they have that three thousand square foot lot.
Yeah, understood.
A lot of them are coming in and start, like, along Market Street, there are some great examples where it's two or three floors of living and then a roof deck on top. And that's, that would just be a very different feel for the neighborhoods currently.
Yeah.
It would fit under this.
Yeah, a lot of that is, you know, obviously due to that, a lot of these buildings are like zero lot lines, and you effectively have no yard. Right? You're the only surface, surface improvements are maybe like a small thing outside your front door and then driveway. And so it's really the only opportunity and, you know, that kind of more urban environment to provide any kind of outdoor living. So they are super popular.
And I'm sorry, real quick, do, do those structures you just mentioned on Mark Street, do they have covered roof decks or uncovered?
They're usually uncovered, but maybe a covered stairwell going up to them.
Yeah, so I can, I can check with one of our, our plans reviewers to understand building code implications of that and whether that's occupiable. And oftentimes, you know, if if you have occupied floor area over a certain height, for example, that's going to kick you into a different type of construction, which then has more requirements on it. And so that in and of itself is going to prevent people from doing that, just because that that type of construction is going to be so significantly more expensive.
It might make sense to call that out in the use tables also. I don't know if that would be a thing to add, but if if roof decks aren't in the plan.
Yeah.
For this sort of middle housing.
Yeah, I'll run that to ground and and have some additional information next time we meet.
Lovely. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I guess just to follow along the conversation about roof decks, I know, I guess the way I see it is that it provides outdoor space. And I, I don't know if you're proponent or you're not in favor of them, but I do know that if there's a deck as opposed to, you're often, I guess, see decks, sometimes those can encroach into a setback. So it's like, so it's just perhaps another option to provide outdoor space if there's not another option, for example.
Yeah, agreed. And we actually had this discussion about decks because the current code language is is kind of inadequate in terms of whether upper story decks, like a third story deck can project into a setback, and that's clearly not the intent because, you know, that's, that's part of the building. And so we've tightened up the language relative to deck projections into setbacks based on that.
Yeah, and I don't know if I'm a proponent or not. I think it depends a lot on the situation, but it's, I just, right now, to me, it's vague, which doesn't seem like what would be the goal in the code. So just having an actual directive and then.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah. I mean, I'm a proponent if it's my rooftop deck, but I don't want any of my neighbors to have one, right? So.
You understand the problem. Thank you.
I do.
Which direction would you like staff to to look at this, though? Like, would you like us to revise the code so that it prohibits roof decks or reins it in, or?
I don't, I'm, I think that's way too big a like directive for one person in this room right now. It's, I think that it, I think that unless it is specified, you will see a lot of them. Just because it is such a common building style right now. So if that is not the intention, then I think that should be very clear.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll keep this open and come back to it. Number eight, this was an Issue Matrix item about the uses. I think we touched on that in the PowerPoint. We can come back to it later. What are Commissioner's thoughts on this one? Can we close it and come back later?
Yes, please. We need a lot more clarity on how that's going to get done. So, at least, I don't know what Commissioner Vidius says, but that would be my take.
It's not ripe yet.
Yes.
You got it. Issues nine was about manufactured housing. I wanted to confirm that, yes, manufactured housing will be allowable per our existing code. There will be no additional barriers created to it. So where you can build it and apply it now, you will be under these regulations as well.
So my actual question was about can we have a list of pre-approved specs on these kind of units that reside outside of the regulations which can be updated? But it kind of eases the process, and this comes down to somebody who is not a professional developer, right? But might want an ADU or some kind of unit at the back. Having some kind of cheat sheet, if you will, right? That these are pre-approved, if you really want to look at it, they meet the codes, they meet the requirements. It is just an option. I know other cities have done it in terms of at least knowing some of the manufacturers. It's just a starting point. It doesn't have to be, you know, it's, it's, it's just to get people started, that's all.
Yeah, and that's a, that's a great point. We know that some jurisdictions in our region have had pretty decent success with it. We know some other jurisdictions have struggled. When I first joined the city in 2020, there were discussions among arch jurisdictions if we wanted to create kind of a regional approach to pre-approved ADUs. I will say broadly, our hope is that these regulations would make it easier to do that. But the actual creation of pre-approved plans is kind of a distinct topic from the regulations that is in front of PC right now. Certainly something we could explore, but it it's not directly a result of the the amendments in front of Commission tonight.
But where would it reside if it had to reside somewhere?
So I think it's actually a separate process that would exist outside of the code. I mean, I know that's the way that it worked in Seattle, which is the program that I'm most familiar. So basically, they came up with, you know, I think they actually did like a competition of designers to come up with, you know, some, some pre-approved plans. And what's great about that is it it makes the building permitting and the fires, to a certain extent, the fire permitting process earlier, easier and, you know, much more streamlined, obviously, because it's, it's like, you know, it's literally pre-approved. Where it doesn't necessarily provide the same level of efficiency is relative to the kinds of zoning regulations that you're reviewing in the package. Because as we talked about in a, a couple, an item further up, you know, every lot is different. You know, it's a different shape, it presents different topography, you know. And so where where these things need to be located, the the complication comes in the, in the sighting. And then how, you know, that the footprint of that would then comply with all the other regulations, lot coverage, impervious surface, parking, things of that nature. And so it solves one, some of those problems, and it's, from my perspective, it's worth doing. You know, but I think that that would be kind of a separate project outside of the zoning code amendments per se. You know, that would be something that we'd have to work on with, with our building and fire and, you know, figure out some, whether we do like a competition like Seattle did, or or whether we do, and, you know, an RFP, RFQ, and have someone, you know, kind of join on that basis, you know, to be determined, but.
Okay, thank you. That, that helps. If it resides outside the code and we don't have a place to put it, maybe it's something that the city should look at, and I don't know where, that would be a recommendation, I guess, but it would be good to have simply because it's, again, it's a starting point for people who may not know where to, you know, go, right? And and also, if it's prefabricated, even better. They get a sense of, you know, when and how, just, you know, those specs are also attached, so. Yeah, so you can close this in. And also close, I just, in the interest of time here, ten, eleven, thirteen, okay. Thirteen, fifteen, and sixteen.
Okay, thank you for that, Commissioner Parnell. We'll hop back up to twelve then?
Yes, so, yeah, twelve is me again. So I just, for me, the question here is primarily one of, if, if, let's say, we have the affordability piece come in here, and you say, okay, if you subdivide your lot and you've got twelve different townhomes and two have to be affordable and the numbers don't add up, what prevents somebody from, not twelve, but maybe six? add up, what prevents somebody from, not 12, but maybe six, right? And what prevents somebody from building this super luxurious 4,500 square feet home? I know that we don't have any incentives directly and you're saying that the incentives come from increased buildup, but then if you put affordability on that, it's kind of, I don't know how that works.
Yeah, that's a great question because ultimately the, the flexibility that's coming from the middle housing regulations is intended to provide just that, more flexibility, more options for housing choices. And also the city does have whether, clear direction, both from state requirements, regional planning policies and our own internal direction, that we value housing choices and affordability. So how do we square that circle? And I think the, the main way we walk that is through that precise financial feasibility, which will come from the arch analysis, right? We want to make sure that the affordability requirements are such that it is the optimal path to go and get multiple different housing types per lot. And to your point, Commissioner Parnell, you know, if, it could very easily with imprecise allocations create a burden where such it would be more optimal to just knock out those large detached, single-family homes. So we need to be open-minded with the different ways that we can approach affordability for these middle housing lots. And I trust that you'll help us walk that path.
Now, I, see, I see the conundrum here and like I'm concerned because for me, every time a huge house goes up and I see a, you know, it's almost more of the lot taken up and, you know, the price point is like three, four million. I am not seeing anything going to change. And these are my worries that we, with the best of intentions, we can add all these different choices, but they are, is everybody gonna make a beeline towards, you know, everything will be minimum one and a half million? Now, that's what I'm seeing in Kirkland, right? You've got all these infill development, these townhomes, but you can't, like, I look at the, I'm reading the number of zeros on the, you know, the price listing and I'm like, okay, that isn't affordable at all, right? So, so for me, that's the concern in this whole thing. So hopefully how it is done will help, but we should approach it from a place of maybe incentive, not necessarily making all the places affordable, but incentivizing certain things more than others. So maybe there are several strategies we need, just not just affordability, I don't know, not just inclusionary zoning, right? I, I don't know how that works, but maybe we need to cap something on the other side.
Well, yeah, we've got the number 4,500 in, in there, right? So, you know, if, if that's not the right number, we should talk about that. You know, if you think a different number that's smaller is more appropriate, you know, I think that's a fair discussion to have. You know, ultimately that's a policy choice. So, cause like I said, I mean, we're not sure how this is gonna play out. And in my mind, I think the way that this is gonna play out is, you know, the, the kind of low-hanging fruit for, for middle housing is gonna be larger lots, right? It's gonna be those, you know, quarter, half, one acre lots, because you've got sufficient area to do stuff, right? Like the smaller lots, you know, the economics, maybe for some limited situations, you know, you've, you've got a, a 5,000, 6,000 square foot lot and, you know, you've, you've got a, the structure that has run its useful life, for example. You know, maybe that's a candidate for a tear down and a duplex. But the, the true six units, the six units per lot, I think we're gonna, we're gonna see those really only in, in larger lot scenarios. And so I think, you know, how the economics work is, is going to be interesting and particularly how the ability to do up to six units of middle housing on an acre lot, how that's gonna affect land pricing, I think, you know, is something that we, we can't predict. But I think that ultimately, you know, that, that will be a question because for those lots in particular, the lots that are attractive for the specific type of developer who's gonna do middle housing projects, you know, that, that's gonna allow them to bid more for those types of lots than probably a, someone who wants to do a 4,500 square foot single-family detached house, uh, cause they're gonna be able to get more, more return on investment from six units. But how that plays out is, I mean, I'm just speculating. Want to be clear about that.
Yeah, I mean, I think discussing, discussing the 4,500 square foot limit is a good discussion. It's probably one better had after the arch analysis.
Yep. But again, I, yeah, just if I could make one final point and then I'll shut up. So what we anticipate, what we have modeled in, in, in our comprehensive planning is an assumption that 20% of existing lots will redevelop as middle housing developments. And that is much more aggressive than, maybe Jeff can speak to this or Ian can, that's much more aggressive than the vast majority of cities who are anticipating like 5% and doing their comprehensive planning based on that. So in terms of a scale of what we should anticipate, you know, we're at 20% and I think we're highly optimistic that we're gonna get that, whereas other, other jurisdictions, you know, for whatever reason, they're, they're using lower numbers as the expectation for redevelopment of existing lots.
So on the 4,500, just to prepare us for that conversation whenever we have it, does Redmond keep any sort of statistics on, like what percentage of houses are within different size ranges? Like, do we know that 7% of homes are over that amount today or?
It's a really good question.
Like, how many are above 3,500? Like, do we have any grading on that top end?
Odr, do you know what we could pull from G I S?
Yes, we could probably pull something from N R Gov and do some kind of analysis. But yeah, current land use database does probably get that some, at some point, but it doesn't, the way we have it set up, it doesn't go like farther back to 2015. So I guess if you wanted to see the whole city total, it would need a little bit more of analysis and data management and, you know, messaging the, the numbers.
I just think it would be interesting to know because my original reaction was I can't think of any homes except for a few streets that are in that ballpark. And then I was thinking, I was like, wait a second, no, there's, there are some real pockets of new development that are there or over, especially like I'm thinking of the area around Rose Hill Middle School, which is redeveloping really fast right now. Where it's basically, like you have the larger lots and they're being subdivided into enormous homes are being put on them. So that's an example of maybe, like you can't call those middle housing, they're not, they're just like sheer luxury.
Yes.
Very, very expensive, very behemoth. So I don't, like, it would maybe help inform the conversation.
Well, I do know we do have those bigger structures because I think that's where, why we put that limit on 4,500, because we do, we're, we are getting those and we have those structures right now.
Right.
But I, getting, getting the data is, we could, but I don't know how, I have to look, probably do a deep dive into what we have right now and see if I can get you some numbers.
Yeah, I just, I don't know how outrageous that number is. Like, is it, is it very out of step for the community? Is it very com, is it like a 10% common new development? I just, I don't know if there would be blowback on either side.
Yeah, I, like we said, we can try and pull data, but as Odr discussed, the, the framework of our database makes it a little bit difficult. So what I did is I kind of did a pseudo-random sampling of just different neighborhoods in the city. And I don't have a, I don't have a hard percent for you, but I'll tell you while it's not common, it's certainly not uncommon. It's certainly not uncommon. So we could, we'll explore that. We'll explore some methodologies to figure out ways to get a, a better number on you, even if we can't pull the full city relatively quickly. Yeah.
Just want to note for commissioners that we're at 9:40 now. So we might want to wrap this topic up since we'll be coming back to it.
Perfect. Just one quick question. So did we want to put a pin in this until we come back with the affordability requirements?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll close it now, then come back with the analysis.
Yeah.
Got it. Thank you. I think we have one more. I'm game if you are. Number 14.
Make it quick, if we can make it quick.
Okay, yeah, I just had a question on number five. All the rest can be closed. It's more about the covenants. If the affordability piece comes in, we're gonna revisit that piece, right? About the covenants?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, then you can close it. Thank you.
Thank you.
See, that was quick, Chair.
Okay, that was fast. All right. Okay. Staff and Commissioner updates. Ian, what do you have for us?
Okay, for Commissioner updates, we have a special council meeting on the 19th. At that meeting, all three of our Commissioner candidates will be there. Long-range planning staff will also be there to introduce, provide a little bit of a background on the candidates. So all three have made it through the mayoral interviews and they are on track to be formally onboarded and ready for our first April commission meeting. Now that segues into our second topic. The first meeting of April is a barn burner. It is, with just the items we have on now and using, in my opinion, very conservative time estimates, it is going to be a 3.5 hour meeting. Now, we also have multiple public hearings on that date. We also have election of officers. So my request to the commission is, please be prepared, please make sure that you can attend and that you have your coffee, tea, sleep, yoga, whatever you need to do to stay sharp for a very long day.
Will we be able to get some of that material a little bit earlier? Do we have the agenda?
The packet materials?
Yeah.
That is a tough ask, but I will do what I can for you. Thank you.
Any Commissioner updates? Nope. Then I will ask for a vote. What? Ian?
Uh, we have a hand up from Commissioner Parnell and a hand up from Jeff Churchill.
Oh, sorry. Jeff first.
Thank you. To Commissioner Woodyer about the packet materials, the public hearings on April 10th, then there are three of them, all of the materials for that will be in your March 27th packet. So you'll have a couple of weeks and change to be prepared for that hearing. I don't think there are, I can't promise that right now, but most of the material will not be new. So that's the good news by April 10th.
Okay. Anything, anything else?
Uh, yes, I'm not here on April 10th, but I will be there in spirit and I will have comments for everybody over email as needed. Thank you.
Okay. I won't be here either, but then I will be on the commission, so. Uh, I look for a motion to adjourn. That's the word I'm looking for.
I'm so moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then we are adjourned.
Yeah, thank you, everyone.